This mayoral staff of the Board of Alderman will now come to order. Please rise for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance. After which Alderman Vaughn would like to open us with a word of prayer. And he will yield his word of prayer tonight to Pastor Eriker. And after that time, we will observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please all join me in a word of prayer? Father, we come before you tonight thankful that you are a good and loving God. As we meet, Father, here in this room tonight with those who have the privilege and the responsibility of guiding and leading our city, we pray for each of them a special dispensation of your grace and your wisdom. Father, this week, we are mindful of our mothers who loved us and brought us into this world. We pray your blessings upon them. And as we sit in this room, in this country, in this place where we are certainly a privileged people, we are also mindful of those in the world who are not. We are mindful of those in Nepal who need your help and your blessings right now. Again, we ask for your grace and your mercies to be on these, our elected officials. We pray that you would give them guidance, wisdom, and insight as they lead our city. It's in Jesus' name that I pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
Do I have before you a copy of the written agenda? Are there any proposed revisions to the agenda as written?
Mr. Mayor, would you please?
Yes.
I would like under Utilities Department, K1, to pull that from Consent.
All right, item 11, K1, a request for approval, resolution authorizing and approving execution of equipment lease purchase has been removed from the Consent Agenda. Alderman Maynard, do you have further proposed revisions?
Yes, sir. Is Mr. Dennis Wise, you know, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wise has a public appearance tonight. He's driving in from Jackson. He just hasn't arrived yet. I'd like to move item 7, Public Appearances, to the last item on the agenda prior to close the determinations session.
All right, proposed revision from Alderman Maynard is to revise the agenda, reordering it, moving what was previously item Roman numeral 7 to be item Roman numeral 12, and reorder the subsequent portion of the agenda to compensate for the change. Alderman Maynard, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir, it is.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, please note the change. Alderman Maynard, do you have further proposed revisions?
No, sir.
Any further proposed revisions from the members of the board?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Little.
I'd like to add under Board Business, item 10E, request approval to allow Boy Scout Bobby Morgan to install a soccer kicking wall at the Sportsplex Soccer Field as his Eagle Scout project is previously authorized by the Parks Commission. He was set out to do this sometime a while back, but the inclement weather and the ground's just been saturated with all the rain, and they've had to push this out. And now they're seeking board approval to move forward with this project. It's going to be no cost to the city for this. And I'd like for Bobby, I believe Bobby's back in the back, if you'd stand up. And I appreciate you taking this on and doing this project for the city. It means a lot to us. I understand there's several of these kicking walls at most of the complexes around the state, and it's something that we've been lacking, so.
All right, and is your proposed revision to place this matter on the Consent Agenda?
It is.
Proposed revision, Alderman Little, is to place the following matter on the Consent Agenda. It is, this will be under Board Business, Roman numeral 10, subsection E, a request for approval to allow Boy Scout Bobby Morgan to install a soccer kicking wall at the Sportsplex Soccer Field as his Eagle Scout project is previously authorized by the Parks Commission. Alderman Little, is that your proposed revision? Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, that matter has been added to both the Agenda and the Consent Agenda. Alderman Little, do you have further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions from the members of the board?
Mr. Mayor. I point the board's attention to item Department Business and Planning D, so item 11B2D, the request for approval of a contract for mowing and maintenance of cemeteries with Leslie Dean. That is not the lowest bid, so we need to put some facts on the record. And Mrs. City Clerk, if you would, make sure these facts get in the record. And Mr. Sanders, if you would, just confirm the facts that I'm going to say, and then I'll ask you for a narrative summary. If you add the amount of the low bid up for the work at Oddfellow Cemetery and Brush Armor Cemetery, that low bid was $1,673, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And the next lowest bid was $2,050.
That is also correct.
And so the difference between those two bids is $377.
Yes, sir, it is.
And it's your recommendation not to go with the low bid, but to go with the next lowest bid, the bid by Leslie Dean. And what is the reasoning for that?
Due to the quality of the work of the previous contract, due to a complaint from a citizen on an issue involving damage to property that was not resolved, and the quality of work and how it can affect the grieving family at the cemetery.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Do I hear a proposed revision to incorporate the findings of the city attorney and community development director into the item approved on the Consent Agenda, which is item 11B2D? So, proposed revision has been made by Alderman Little. Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Alderman Carver.
The work of the lowest bidder, was that something that property damage, is that on city property? Is that the?
Yes, sir. Private property. Answer, privacy acting.
So is this something that's ongoing right now?
Yeah, the claim was made in a public hearing, August 20th, 2013, by former Alderman Jeremiah Davis. A rock was thrown and hit his van, and the company never took care of the issue.
Okay. Alderman Carver, do you wish to enter an objection?
No, sir.
Is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, that language has been added to the approval of that item. Any further proposed revisions to the Agenda? Any further proposed revisions to the Agenda? Any further proposed revisions? Seeing none, a motion to approve the Agenda as revised is in order?
Some of.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve the Agenda as revised. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman. When? Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. You now have before you the approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there any objection to the approval of the revised Consent Agenda? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, the revised Consent Agenda has been approved. The next matter that you have before you is announcements and comments by the mayor and members of the board. And I have one comment tonight. It's actually a recognition. Could Ms. Cory Martin please come forward?
As most of you are probably aware, Ms. Martin just completed the Boston Marathon and I have a proclamation from the mayor and board to recognize Ms. Martin. This is a proclamation by the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, recognizing Cory Martin Day. Whereas Cory Martin, a mom of three, a wife and OCA Wellness Connection, personal trainer, completed the Boston Marathon on Monday, April 20th, 2015. Whereas, the Boston Marathon is an annual event hosted by several cities in the greater Boston, Massachusetts area, and is always held on Patriots' Day. Whereas, not just anyone can compete in the Boston Marathon. Runners must qualify to participate in the race. Cory completed the Tupelo Marathon on August 31st, 2014, and ran an average pace of seven minutes, 54 seconds for 26 miles, qualifying her for the Boston Marathon. Whereas, Cory had an interest in running the Boston Marathon for quite some time, and she qualified to run twice. However, after running the St. Jude's Memphis Marathon in 2007, she got some devastating news that delayed her entrance into the Boston Marathon. Whereas, it was three months after Cory's first qualification to the Boston Marathon when her mother was diagnosed with terminal cancer, and Cory wanted to spend time with her mom. So she put off her goal of competing in the Boston Marathon. Whereas, Cory's mother lived 18 months after she was diagnosed. Cory proceeded to run after the passing of her mother, and running helped deal with the loss. Whereas, Cory braved the elements of rain, 40-degree temps, and 25 mile-per-hour headwind. The entire race finished with an impressive time of 3 hours, 34 minutes, 15 seconds. Whereas, Cory joined more than 30,000 people to run 26.2 miles. She had her husband cheering her on from the sidelines, hundreds of friends cheering her on via social media, and, via social media from Starkville and her native home of Lincoln, Missouri, and a four-year mom from above. Now therefore, we, partner wise men, mayor of the city of Starkville, and the city of Starkville Board of Alderman, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2015, as Cory Martin Day in the city of Starkville, and call upon our fellow residents to come out and help us pay tribute to this individual who is a member of our community. My please join me in praying.
(APPLAUSE).
I just, I wanted to say I'm touched and flattered and honored to be recognized for representing the city of Starkville in the Boston Marathon. The race was amazing, especially after the bombing. It was very inspirational. And I think what was more amazing to me about the marathon was the support and motivation that are received from my community back home. And I just really appreciate everybody from Starkville. Thank you so much.
And that concludes my comments this evening. Are there any comments by the members of the board? Alderman, when?
Chief Nichols, will you come forward, please? Chief, I understand that two members of your department will soon be seen throughout our state. Will you tell the board members a little bit about that and who they are?
Sure. Give reference to honorable mayor, vice mayor, members of the board, Alderman, when. Click It! A Ticket Campaign. Starkville PD has always been tops in the state with the participation and education of the citizens as well as the other officers. So they asked us if we would like to have our officers represent the Click It! A Ticket Campaign. So Lieutenant Sean Word and motorcycle officer Taylor Wells will be pictured on billboards throughout the state of Mississippi for the Click It! A Ticket Campaign.
Thank you so much, chief. And tell them congratulations from us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the members of the board? Are there any further comments from the members of the board? Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. At this time, any citizen wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Tom Walker, I'm on the board of directors of Huntington Park Home Owners Association. And I'm just here simply at the request of the residents to thank the city, the board of Alderman, and specifically the city attorney, the city engineer, and David Little, our Alderman, for you guys solving a long-term flooding issue, or soon this summer will hopefully solve a long-term flooding issue in Huntington Park. And we also wanted to thank the police for increased presence in Huntington Park. It's made a difference both with particular issue and with speeding on Huntington Drive that people like. It's about a mile long, so people like to keep going probably a little faster than 25, so.
Yes, sir.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Greetings, Mayor, and welcome. I'm Attorney Tom Ward, 7. I'd like to recognize Vice Mayor Pukey in honor of the gentleman. Citizens are very emotional. We need to pray for the police officers to have wives and husbands, firefighters. It's a dangerous job. They're very frightened. They don't know whether they're comparing to come home or not. And it's a trying thing if you spit on or you slap a citizen with the people working in these positions. Let us pray much for them because it's a dirty job what they have to do.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Further citizen comments?
Mayor, board, I want to thank all of you on behalf of the partnership for your work, especially Alderman Maynard, for the partnership with the Fire Station Park. I cannot speak highly enough for how well Saturday went with the farmers market. I think it just is a perfect fit, a perfect partnership. And I was nervous, but Saturday could not have gone better than I wanted it to. Specifically, would like to commend Chief Harbrow, who has been phenomenal to work with. He came in the midst of this, and he has just had my back and has helped me in ways that I couldn't have anticipated even helped. And his firemen have been very accommodating. So I just want to, you know, speak to how easy to work with they've been and how much they've helped me. So thank you guys so much. I hope that we've started a partnership that will just continue to grow. And please come to the market if you didn't come on Saturday. We'll be there Saturday and Tuesdays, and I'll be there. So feel free to, you know, let me know if you guys have any feedback at all. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brayden.
I am Stan Miller, athletic director for Starkville Schools. And I'm a little wobbly because I just had hip surgery here about five weeks ago. But I want to thank the city, the Alderman, our basketball team, 6A state champions. And I appreciate the support of this city and this board of letting us put that banner up downtown, just like we did two years ago for the football team, our banner for our basketball team. So thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. May I maybe recognize? You may. Thank you. Dr. Miller, I saw you sitting there, and I was looking at the agenda, and I gather this while you are here. And I just want to take this opportunity because you and I go way back in time. Just want to really personally thank you for all of your contributions to the Starkville School District, to the community. You served in a number of capacities. You've been a very great asset to the city, to the school district, and to everything that you have been involved with. So I just, again, want to say personally thank you for all that you have done.
Right, I appreciate those kind words.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. And you will always be my high school principal.
Yes, sir.[1091.01][1091.01](LAUGHTER).
Any further citizen comments?
I am speaking on behalf of the mayor's youth council members that are here tonight. We'd just like to thank you all for allowing us to have such a club in our community. And over the past year of this year's council, we have done numerous community service projects. We helped with the Cotton District Arts Festival. We volunteered at the casserole kitchen at the First Presbyterian Church. We've cleaned up, and we've gathered leaves in different neighborhoods. And we recently made bird feeders for the local nursing homes. So we greatly appreciate the opportunity, and it's really opened our eyes to our community. So I'd just like to thank you all for that.
Thank you, Ms. Fant. And could the members of the mayor's youth council that are here tonight please stand? It is graduation season, and I have tiptoed around this a few times at previous meetings, but I'm just going to go ahead and go all the way tonight. I think you guys collectively are the best mayor's youth council group that we have had yet. Each year, we ask, we require members of the mayor's youth council to come to board meetings, and there is no group that has had their presence felt at board meetings throughout the year as much as you all have. And I appreciate everything you've done this year. Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? All right, seeing none, our public appearance has been moved. We have two public hearings scheduled tonight. Both are rezoning matters. The first is a public hearing on matter number RZ-15-01. We will begin the public hearing by hearing introductory comments by community development director Buddy Sanders.
Case RZ-15-01, Providence Hill LLC is requesting a rezoning of 1.34 acres near the intersection of Old West Point Road and Garrett Road from R1 to B1. At the, the planning and zoning commission is recommending approval of this rezoning request with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. At this time, we will enter the public comment portion of the public hearing. And do we have an applicant that wishes to make a presentation? Applicant, you will have a maximum of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm John Moore, attorney for the applicant. Couple of things that we would like to talk about. We've previously filed an initial report, which is part of your package, which you have. Some of it I'm going to skip over because we're in basic agreement with what the planning and zoning commission did. The property is actually zoned R1 and C1. For some reason, a sliver of the property on the west end got zoned R1. And I think it probably occurred back when Boyd Pilkington had his trailer parked, and he had a larger piece of property. And when he divided the property up between his children, they didn't take into consideration where the zoning lines were. So we ended up with a piece of property that's basically dual-zoned. So we want to get it into one zone so we can adequately use the property. We felt like the B1 zone would be a zone that would be most beneficial, not only to our clients, but to the surrounding area. Because the nature of that area has changed significantly since we've opened the bypass. There's been quite a few changes in that area, which are listed in our report, too. And let me get to those. The Court property was rezoned from residential to commercial. That was done in February 2005. Then in February 2007, the Federal Land Bank property was rezoned R1 to C2. Then in Walt Star in February 2008 was granted a conditional use for allowance of residential use in a C2 zoning district. April 2013, the Burns property, which is on the bypass that houses all the new apartments that you're seeing going toward campus, was rezoned from R1 to B1. And then in April 2013, an additional piece of that property was rezoned from R1 to B1. We feel like a B1 zone district in this area would be compatible with the residential areas that surround it, including the cottages at Creekside, which is the Cracker property. They have built seven residences that are complete, six of which are sold. They have started another eight units, and this property is just due west of our property. Our intentions, in a B1 zone, you can do commercial as well as residential. The only thing that we have an objection to with the planning and zoning commission's recommendation is they listed five criteria. The one that we have an issue with is involving curb cuts. If the property is used as a commercial use, which would be higher traffic, higher activity coming off that lot, the planning and zoning commission recommended one access point. But if we were going to use it as a residential use, they recommended no access points. Well, for the residential use, one access point on Old West Point Road is going to create less activity and less traffic than one commercial access. So we would like the option of being able to come off of Old West Point Road owned our property. Now, curb cuts aren't really zoning issues. Those are development review committee issues. And we have rules, regulations, and ordinances that determine where curb cuts can be. So we would be content with the curb cuts be determined by our engineer and the city engineering and the fire department, the police department, without us being limited in any way, without having to do a full design plan and know exactly where these things need to be. So I think we need to try to separate a rezoning from conditions that typically should be determined by a development review committee. And so with that being said, the rest of the conditions, we really have no issue with. As far as a change in the conditions, with opening of the bypass, we're going to see some new residents occur on the north side of town. That's something that we haven't seen in years. Without that bypass, we wouldn't be seeing it now. So we've had the Bay Meadows subdivision, which is off of Rose Perkins. We've seen that develop. We've seen the Cracker property develop. And now this property, we want to do residences, which is approximately six to seven lots is kind of what we anticipate. So like I said, that is an asset to the north side of town now that we have the opportunity to do some residential development there. Also, to show that there's a need in the community, in the last 12 months, we've had 36 properties that are listed in the price range that our properties would be listed at. In the last 12 months, 26 of those properties have closed at a volume of $5,282,000. There's only currently 10 active listings in the price range that we're looking at. So we've got a very good market. We're trying to improve the north side of town. The access is great to the university. We're going to continue to see residential development. We think that's going to make a good buffer between that and all the commercial activity that you're going to now see on the bypass. And we ask that we be given the opportunity to have a cut-in on Old West Point Road, provided we meet all the rules, regulations, and ordinances of the city of Starkville. Any questions?
We'll take those then.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application for rezoning? You will have a total of 15 minutes collectively and three minutes per individual. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, that will conclude the public comment portion of the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments by the members of the board? Any questions or comments by the members of the board? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, that will conclude this public hearing on matter number RZ-15-01. The next public hearing that you have before you is on matter number CU-15-03, a conditional use request by Margaret Collier-Barlow to allow a mobile home on Long Street, parcel Mr. Sanders, would you like to introduce the matter?
Yes, sir. Conditional use, CU-15-03 is a request from Ms. Margaret Collier-Barlow for the use of a mobile home near a property she owns near the intersection of Long Street and Zubler Street. The subject parcel is .42 of an acre in size, and it's in an R5 zoning district. A mobile home is only allowed as a conditional use in R5 zone.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. At this time, we will move to the public comment portion of the public hearing. Do we have an applicant who wishes to speak on the matter? Do you wish, does the applicant wish to speak?
I realize we're going to have to say anything.
You don't have to say anything. It's just an opportunity.
I had spoken at the zoning meeting before and was asking permission, and it was zoned for the mobile home. So I knew that I was supposed to come before you tonight. Mr. Daniel had told me to come to this meeting tonight to see what would take place.
And Mr. Sanders, were Ms. Barlow's comments entered? And Mr. Sanders, were Ms. Barlow's comments entered in the record at the P&amp;Z meeting?
Yes, sir. It's a public hearing.
So Ms. Barlow, would you like to rest on your comments that you entered at the P&amp;Z meeting?
Ms. Barlow, now is your time to be heard before this board. Is there anything else you would like to say to this board relating to your proposed conditional use?
It's, it's just that I, I moved back here from Indiana, and I'm originally from Starkville. And the property belongs to my family and my sister. And we have agreed that I could put the home there if it's allowed by the board.
Ms. Barlow, do you have any further comments you'd like to make? Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed rezon, or proposed conditional use? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed conditional use? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public, public comment portion of the public hearing is closed. Are there any questions or comments by the members of the board? Alden Carver.
Yeah, I want to ask a couple of questions about this. I mean, so P&amp;Z approved with these, it looks like five or six conditions?
Yes, sir.
The only thing I think struck out was the, I guess that's, that's more or less a rectangular piece of property, but it struck out of the way that the mobile home should sit, right? It's a rectangular piece of property like this, and it was on there running east to west, I guess, to kind of run parallel with that piece of property or inside of it. But if it was to run north and south, would that matter? Would it stick longer than the piece of property?
Originally, it was staff's recommendation that the mobile home shall be required to run east-west with the short side facing Long Street. And reason for that request is for essentially different planning of the buildings. So all, planning commissioner, Ira Lovelace, asked for that condition to be struck from the recommendation. And the Planning and Zoning Commission went forward, striking item at that time was number five, and is making a recommendation of a five-to-one vote for the conditional use program with five conditions.
And this is a piece, is this a piece of property that has conventional houses on both sides of it?
That is correct, along with, there are mobile homes on the street.
There are?
Yes, sir. That, the, the subject lot is, is making.
Thank you.
Alden Walker.
Mr. Sanders, if, other than for the conditional use, would the, the location of the trailer and the orientation of the trailer and whether it's east-west or north-south, would that comply with the other R3 standards setbacks?
Yes, sir. The, Mr. Havill and I went over that, that issue today, and the setbacks that are required for our R5 zoning district for a local home would be 25 feet in the front setback, 20 foot to the side, and 20 foot for the rear.
What's the, what is the width of this property? On the short side?
I'll pin it on that, sir.
Okay. But it should, that the, so orientation shouldn't matter? Either way, it should be able to comply and meet those other standards?
That's right. It is staff, it's staff understanding that Ms. Barlow is currently in the market to purchase a trailer. She's not already purchased a trailer, so she would need to take that into consideration when purchasing her home.
Thank you.
Alden Wynn.
Mr. Sanders, I'm going to ask you, I don't know if you know this, is their property that's over there that was once destroyed by fire, is it still existing over there?
That, you don't have to.
Okay.
Further questions or comments by the members of the board? Are there any further questions or comments by the members of the board? Any further questions or comments?
I've got one more. Did you notify all of the individuals that live within so many feet of it? And what were their opinions?
Within 300 feet.
Did everybody, anybody respond?
Staff has not stated any type of comment to me, and I haven't received any telephone calls or emails.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, that will conclude this public hearing on matter number CU-15-03. The next matter that you have before you is discussion and consideration of a resolution declaring the intention of the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi to issue general obligation public improvement bonds of said municipality in the maximum principal amount of $3 million to raise money for the purpose of repairing, improving, adorning, and equipping the current city hall for use by the Starkville Police Department. Discussion.
Alden Maynard. This resolution is, allows us to just be in a position to issue bonds when we get to the point that we want to construct or renovate this building. It is changed from a certificate of participation because on the advice of the city attorney, a, a building renovation, tell me if I'm speaking out of term, a building renovation would not necessarily fall under the, the normal guidelines or certificates of participation. They also require that an outside group buy this building, and we have to lease the building back, which I'm not sure is exactly what we wanted to do. And by issuing general obligation bonds, we can actually save money on the interest rate. So, from the taxpayers' point of view, as budget chair, I feel this is a better way to go. Again, this is just a resolution of intent. We won't actually vote to issue these bonds for a while. During that time, we are in the process of applying for grants to help offset some of this cost. If those are funded, obviously this will, will cost less. One of the things that was added, I believe, Mr. City Attorney, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the packet, the bond resolution did not include the parking lot, but we have added that at the table, that these bonds, if issued, would also cover renovation of the building and the parking lot as well.
Mr. Mayor.
You may.
Just to touch on both of those points, Alden Maynard, and I appreciate that. The original title to the resolution did allow for the renovation and refurbishment of the interior and exterior of city hall, and also for parking lot maintenance. But what we did was we spelled it out specifically in the draft that's on the table to make sure there's no doubt whatsoever that a portion of these funds will go to the repair and the striping and the overlay of the parking lot, because that's associated real property that goes with city hall. And to your point about the cops, meaning the certificates of participation, I think that would be technically legal if the board wanted to travel under that financing option for the refurbishment of city hall. However, that statutory language is very ill-fitting and cumbersome when the city is not acquiring property or building new property. So I think the fit is better under a straight GO, which is the way the resolution is drafted now.
Alden Maynard, do you have the call?
With that, I would like to request approval of this resolution declaring the intention of the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi to issue general obligation public improvement bonds of said municipality in the maximum principal amount of $3 million to raise money for the purpose of repairing, improving, adoring, and equipping the current city hall for use by the city Starkville Police Department.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of a resolution declaring the intention of the mayor of the Board of Alderman and, or the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville to issue general obligation public improvement bonds of said municipality in the maximum principal amount of $3 million to raise money for the purpose of repairing, improving, adorning, and equipping the current city hall for use by the Starkville Police Department as presented and amended at the table. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
Discussion. Any discuss, Alden Walker.
I, I support, I support this concept of this project. I think that we evaluated the cadence property for either purchase and renovation, and it was determined by, through the due diligence and having Mr. Schaefer and others look at the value between these two properties, that renovating this building is the, the right way forward. And, Mr. Attorney, can you say, tell me for sure, is the certificate of participation that was originally agreed to with the new city hall and the 1.2, 1.3 million dollars that were earmarked, if you will, for the renovation of this building, that has expired? Is that correct?
It has, and the city never issued the certificates of participation for this building. So the city has a clean slate to pick whatever financing arm it wants to now. It's not like the city has 1.3 sitting there that's already allocated through the certificates of participation.
Okay, thank you. So, to me, this is a little bit like the, the cadence building. I am supportive of the idea of this. I think it's the, the right way to go, and this doesn't bind us at this point of making any final decision. We're not releasing the money. And so as we move forward in this process, once we have more detailed drawings, once we have hard figure estimates, then I think we really be able to make a decision on how we move forward with this project. So I certainly support this. I think this is much needed, and looking forward to having a little bit more of the, the hard numbers as we get a little further in the process so we can make a definitive decision to release these bonds.
Alden Carver, you had your hand raised previously. Do you wish to still be recognized?
Oh, yes, sir. So with that, you'll actually do the issuance of the bonds on June the 2nd? Is that the plan now after the three notifications in the paper?
That is the earliest you could issue the bonds. I, I would suggest you have an opportunity this fall to make an application to the Heritage Grant Program through the Mississippi Department of Markrives and History. I think this project is a strong candidate for that program. Also, last year, the City of Columbus received a legislative appropriation for renovation to their city hall. I'd also like the opportunity to ask the legislature for funding to help this project. I would recommend planning on an issuance sometime next spring to allow, allow us to see if there's any opportunity for funding in both of those processes.
Okay. Secondly, a lot, that night that we saw the presentation, we threw a lot of different ideas around and, and, you know, the apples-to-apples approach that we talked about. Is this the one that has the facade on, out front included? I mean, is this enough to cover that? And then any kind of aid game issues? We talked about elevators and, you know, things like that.
The hard number estimate that you have is for the internal construction of this building only, yeah? And that is $2.45 million. The ballpark estimate you have for parking lot improvements and improvements to the exterior facade of the building are $2.7 to $2.8 million.
And if we were to, if we were to issue bonds June the 2nd, can, and those, we can, can we still be awarded those grants if we were to win them and offset this, or?
You could. It just makes the ask a little more difficult because they know you've already committed to funding the project in full.
So it'd be best to wait till the springtime?
I think so. I, I think if you wanted to take a step to initiate this project earlier, there's the opportunity to have the architect proceed with full design on the building. Now, if you do that prior to issuing bonds on the building, you need to identify a funding source in your budget for the next fiscal year to do so. Because doing design before you've issued bonds and have proceeds on bonds means that you would not have proceeds available to pay for the design work. But I, I think that's something we should at least look at in the budgetary process this year, because it would be nice if we planned for a spring issuance next year to have the facility drawn and ready for bidding as soon as or even before we have proceeds.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Alden Carver, just to tag that, what it does do is it puts the city on a two-year clock, starting on, on June 2nd. If there's no protest, the city would be on a two-year clock to issue this debt if it so chooses.
Eighteen months or two years?
Two years.
May I be recognized?
You may.
From the budget perspective, we're not in a huge rush to issue these. We need to push out. Number one, we need to get the city hall up, going, and there could be construction delays we don't know about. So we don't want to commit to issuing these bonds until we're in the city hall, and that is done, then we, this building is vacant, then we can come back and begin that process. Plus, we don't want to start paying interest before they would use the money.
I think this is a great idea. I mean, I think this is the renovation of a downtown area that the city already owns and not having to make the purchase. I think if it passes tonight, that the board is putting all good faith and effort that we're going to support our police department. And even though it's a renovation, you're talking about probably 80% of it being new on the inside, probably almost a total remodel. So I don't think it's going to look anything like this, even though the location will be the same. But I will support it tonight.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Alderman Maynard's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. I have a unanimous 7-0 vote.
Mayor, can you give us a second? Can you bring your lady, your chairman, the ADA access?
Okay. All right, the next matter before you is the discussion and consideration of matter number RZ-15-01. Discussion. Alden Wynn.
I have the motion, and I'll use the motion as given to us on our cover sheet. Move approval of Providence Hill LLC rezoning from C-1 and R-1 to B-1 with conditions.
Motion has been made by Alderman Wynn to approve a request, to, to approve a, but to approve of matter number RZ-15-01, a request to rezone, a request from Providence Hill LLC for the rezoning of partial from C1 to, and R1 to B1 with conditions as presented. Aldman Wynn, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, let me get it. Yeah, let me do that.
All right, city attorneys got some comments before we have a seconded motion.
Aldman Wynn, is your motion made with a finding of fact that a change in the neighborhood has occurred to necessitate the proposed rezoning, and there's a public need for the proposed rezoning?
Yes.
And that finding is based on the board packet, the written materials from Mr. Moore, and the comments you heard in the public hearing today?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, but those comments will be incorporated in the minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Aldman Wynn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I'm comfortable with the recommendation of P&amp;Z.
All right, discussion. I see Aldman Little.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, removing the curb cuts, condition two and three. And I agree with Mr. Moore that I think that's something that DRC could take up with engineers and work that out, and that's not a zoning issue for us.
All right, Aldman Little has proposed amending the matter to remove conditions two and three. Is there any objection? Any objection to amending the matter by removing conditions two and three? Aldman Walker, is that an objection?
I don't have an objection. I, I too agree that I think this is a matter I would like to remove and replace, if y'all here replace conditions two and three with the following condition. When the property is developed, the number and location of ingress egress points shall be approved during the design review process.
All right, the, so, so the proposed amendment, and Aldman Little, are you comfortable with Aldman Walker's statement being a part of? with Alderman Walker's statement being a part of your proposed amendment?
I am.
All right, so the proposed amendment would be to strike conditions two and three and adding the language, Alderman, Walker, could you read your language again?
When the property is developed, the number and location of ingress egress points shall be approved during the design review process.
So is that adding a new condition that would read that?
Yes, it could be either replace two and three, and this could become two, and then renumber after that, or this could be added to condition, would that be four now?
All right, so the proposed amendment by Alderman, Walker, is to strike conditions two and three, or, excuse me, the proposed amendment by Alderman, Little, is to strike conditions two and three and add a new condition number two, reordering the remaining conditions to accommodate the change. The new condition two would be when the property is developed, the number and location of ingress and egress points shall be approved during the design review process. Alderman, Little, is that your proposed amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I hear an objection? Any objection? An objection? An objection? The motion has been amended. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor of Alderman, Little's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter you have before you is discussion and consideration of matter number CU 15-03. Discussion.
Mayor?
You may.
I would like to make a motion to deny this request, just I think we need to get away from putting mobile homes within the city limits of the city of Starkville, and especially in a residential area that's an established residential area. So I would move that we deny the request of Ms. Barlow's conditional use for this property.
The city attorney's asked to be recognized.
And Alderman, Maynard, is that based on a finding of fact that it fails the five-point criteria contained in the staff report? Which is the law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Motion has been made by Alderman, Maynard, to deny matter number CU 15-03, a conditional use request by Margaret Collier Barlow to allow a mobile home on Long Street, parcel Alderman, Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? Second. Motion has been seconded by Alderman, Little. Alderman, Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
I see, I saw Carver first, then when. Carver.
I was gonna say, do we have, our city attorney, do we have the right to deny someone to place a mobile home inside city limits if that's going to be a finding of fact?
Yes, it's a conditional use, which means it's up to the board's discretion, and that first point in the five-factor test is will it be harmonious with adjacent land use and not adversely affect adjacent land use, or will it not be harmonious with adjacent land use, and will it adversely affect adjacent land use? And Mr. Maynard's motion has taken into account that he believes it will adversely affect adjacent land use and not be harmonious with that use.
The closest mobile homes to that, how far, how far away are they? I mean, down the road or next, I know it's not next door, but?
Down the street.
Down the street. Quarter mile?
That, the exact distance, I can't get.
Alderman, Carver, do you yield the floor?
Yes, sir.
Actually, Mr. Carver, this is her property right here and right there. There is a mobile home right there that is sitting right over there on the hill, and that's her little property right there. Ms. May, may I be recognized?
You may.
I guess the concern that I have with this board members, and by no means am I being disrespectful, because this is not the ward that I represent, this is Alderman Vaughn's ward, but several months ago, I, along with several members of the board, including Alderman Vaughn, we voted to support the use of a mobile home over on Apple Street. The person was burned out, lost her home, and we supported that. I guess if it were Green Oaks, would I support it? No. If it were Long Meadow or Deerfield or Highland Estates in my ward, I wouldn't support it. If it were Greenbrier in Alderman, Little's ward, I wouldn't support it. If it was in, your area is?
Timberco.
Timberco. I would not support it. If it were Alderman, if it were plantation homes, I wouldn't support this. If this were rolling hills, I wouldn't support it. If this were west side, I would not support it, or north side, I wouldn't support it. But it's over there on Long Street where there are, I mean, numerous amounts of dilapidated properties. If I may ask, Mr. Taylor, am I correct, is there a structure over there that was burned? Is that still standing?
No, it's not standing.
So that's been removed?
That's been removed.
Okay, and I noticed that in one of the photos, there is a house in here. Is that someone that lives in that house, or is that a dilapidated property?
No, no one lived there.
No one lives there?
No.
Okay, Alderman, if you will, take your packets and make sure that you look at that home. So she's willing to put a mobile home there that pretty much looks much better than the properties that are already existing over there. And let me say this, I heard from several people over there in that area today, Mr. Fleming, who has a little barbershop, called an ax me to support this, that they welcome her to the neighborhood. Mrs. Dion Evans called me today and asked that I support this, that they welcome her into the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, she told me that she suggested this to Ms. Barlow. So for me tonight, not to vote in support of Ms. Barlow, it would go against what I actually supported to put a mobile home over there on Apple Street, and I wasn't the only one that voted for that. I think it was five to two that night. So this is something tonight that I cannot vote to deny. And again, if it were in some areas where there were homes, North Side Drive, Green Oaks, Timberco, Greenbrier, Roland, I would not. But that area on Long Street, it would only enhance the beauty of that neighborhood, only it could not hurt it. Thank you all. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Further discussion? Alderman, Little.
I recall that situation that came up a few months ago when some of the board members chose to vote for a mobile home. I was not supportive of that then, and I will not be supportive of a mobile home and will not in the future if it comes to me to vote on any issues involving a mobile home in the city limits of Starkville. I'm not, I don't care which ward it's in, I will not support it. I think we're, our desire for the city is to move past mobile homes, and we did that recently with business facades and expectations, and we shouldn't expect it for our business, commercial businesses, and we don't expect it for our residents. So I will not be supportive of that tonight.
Further discussion? Alderman, when?
Mayor, I have one statement, and I'm going to close it out with this. I wish that we lived in a perfect world here where everyone was able to, you know, purchase a $185,000 or $200,000 home here in our city, but that's just not the case. And sometimes people have to do what is best for them, and what might be best for some people might not necessarily be best for everyone else. You have to do it based on income, and I don't know anything about Ms. Barlow, but I'm certain that if she could go and purchase a $200,000 or $300,000 house, she would not be here at the board meeting tonight asking us to allow her to put a mobile home over there on Long Street. I yield the floor.
Further discussion? Alderman, Walker?
There's a lot of sentiment here for that, and one of the things I think we have to look at in our community is affordable, quality of affordable housing. That should be a mandate in how that looks, and there's certainly opportunity for that to go beyond a mobile home or manufactured home. And I'm hoping that's something through the comprehensive plan we can begin to address. There are certain areas in town now where mobile home and manufactured homes are allowed by right, and there are other areas where they're allowed by conditional use. In this case, this property is allowed by the code of land use, code of land use charts as being a conditional use. And if it were to be placed on the home according to the community development director would meet the other criteria, the setbacks, dimensions, those things related to that R3 zoning. Is that correct?
That's correct.
While this is, while this is a tough, tough spot, there are certainly mobile homes located on the site, and I would ask that the condition, if this does pass, that perhaps there is an additional condition added to make sure that the appearance from the street maintains the viability and improves the visual aesthetic of the neighborhood.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussions? Saying none. We'll now move into a vote on Alderman, Maynard's motion to deny matter number CU 15-03. Again, this is a motion for denial, so if you vote in favor, you are voting against the project. At this time, all those in favor of Alderman, Maynard's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of three in favor with four, or, excuse me, by a vote of four in favor with three against, did I get my count right?
That's my four, three, nay.
If you did it. All right, let's do it one more time. All those in favor of the motion to deny, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. All right, I have four, three. Do you have four, three? All right, by a vote of four in favor and three against, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval of the City of Starkville claims documents. A motion has been made by Alderman, Little, to approve of the City of Starkville claims docket for all departments, including the Starkville Electric Department, as of May 1st, 2015, for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2015. Alderman, Little, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman, Maynard. Alderman, Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. All right, I have five in favor and two against. This measure passes. All right, the next matter you have before you is the reordered public appearance.
Mayor?
We've got one more.
Oh, oh, sorry, we pulled one off. Now, a, the next matter you have before you is a request for approval of a resolution authorizing and approving the execution of an equipment lease purchase agreement with Bancorp South Finance.
Mr. Mayor?
I recognize. Excuse you first.
Mr. Mayor, the reason this was pulled off consent is it has a blank to be filled in that talks about the designated amount of tax-exempt obligations the city is involved in, in the year 2015, and Mr. Adams wanted to hold off on filling in that blank until the earlier resolution passed. So I'm going to pass this resolution to him and ask him to fill in the blank and read section seven so we can get that on the record, and that's all that will be necessary for that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, and you are exactly right. The board has obligated to this point 2.7 million dollars, which we anticipate will issue in the coming weeks, but as there was an intent resolution on this agenda, we did not feel it was appropriate to put a number in there until that item had passed. The board added 3 million to that number today, so the number that I'll write in here will be the 2.7 plus the three, and that'd be 5.7 million that we will, that we will list as the possibility of issue this year.
All right, discussion. Alderman, Maynard?
I'll move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman, Maynard, to approve of a resolution authorizing and approving execution of an equipment lease purchase agreement with Bancorp South Equipment Finance, a division of Bancorp South Bank, for the purpose of lease purchasing certain equipment as presented and amended at the table. Alderman, Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman, Little. Alderman, Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter before you is the public appearance by Dennis Wise. Mr. Wise, you will have 10 minutes to make your presentation, and I would ask that you remain for any questions or comments the board may have when you have concluded your presentation.
I'd like to start by thanking the mayor and the board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and also to administrator staff for providing information that was used in putting this proposal together tonight. I have some materials with me that you may wish to view afterwards, give you kind of an idea of some of the type of things that are used in a program like this, but I will be succinct, because many times this takes more than 10 minutes, so I'll be very brief about this. I wanted to start off by talking about Waste Zero, very briefly, who we are. We are a waste reduction company. We work with over 850 municipalities around the United States, and our core business is helping municipalities cut the amount of trash that they generate and send to landfills, and also helping them save money in that process. We have a number of different type of services that we offer, and tonight we'll be talking about a voucher program for the city of Starkville. So I don't know if you've had the opportunity to view the presentation in the packet, but actually this, I apologize, this looks like the initial one that was sent. I can tell because there were updated numbers that came from staff that upped the number of homes. But in general, currently, you have a trash bag handout program, distribution program that you do for your residents, where you provide 52 bags per household two times a year to all of your folks that are eligible, and I think that's eligible by either a trash fee or a water fee, and then also some types of businesses that you also serve that way. The city has been providing the bags, recycled bags as well, and that is something that we can talk about supporting you with in the future, but tonight it's all about the trash bag situation that you have here. So the bags have been hand-delivered to the resident's lawn and/or front step for a number of years, is my understanding how the program works, and you have 20 city employees that work in this current program, both sourcing, bringing them in, storing them, and then, of course, distributing them and putting them out there. And if there's any quality concerns and things like that, I think that the department also handles that kind of thing. We did take a look at the product that was in use in 2013, and according to the specifications in your bid, that product was a little light.
You're saying the miller rate was lower than what we bid out?
In our testing, yeah. And, you know, I'm aware of some of the things, some of the changes you've had in your program with, you know, the number of bags that people got at one time in terms of how they were packaged, and then I think you had a current round where they, you know, it was a huge package. Generally, you know, we make them in very, very customer-friendly 25 or 26 counts, so that it's very convenient to pick up in a store, and we'll hear about this in a deck here real quick. So you've got some concerns, your current program cost continues to go up, up, up each year when you buy the bags. Our program provides you a turnkey solution that will allow you for savings, and we'll see that as it comes up. You've also got, you're on the hook for the operational headaches that come along with this. So you've got your staff, people that are handling distributing garbage bags, and is that really the most effective use and best and effective use of their time and talents? Probably not. So we take that off the plate, and we handle that whole thing so that your folks can do what they're best at. Wasted bags is probably one of the biggest things. If you think about the fact that you're putting out 100% of all the bags to eligible people, but not all 100% of the people use those bags. Sometimes, you know, as sad as this seems, sometimes those bags actually end up in the garbage can and go into the landfill, completely wasted. Sometimes you have people that are stockpiling them, because they've been collecting them for 15 years, and they have a garage full of them. All of those kind of things. We come in and we, we put a system in place that makes these bags available to everyone, just like it is every year. Anybody who wants bags, gets bags, same number of bags, but that way you're not just arbitrarily giving them to people who maybe don't. that way, you're not just arbitrarily giving them to people who maybe don't want them or don't need them. And resident convenience. Now, it's hard to say that it's more convenient than if it's laying on your front lawn. But generally, people find it very convenient to be able to pick up a smaller roll of bags at their grocery store, where they're used to picking up their groceries. This will just give you a very quick explanation of how the program works. So instead of folks having the bags thrown out in their lawn, they get in the mail two times a year or three times a year, whatever we come up with, these vouchers. And these vouchers are provided to the store as if they're cash. And they're scanned at the store. There are also products that are available in the store. They have UPC codes on them as well. So what happens is when these are scanned, it becomes subtracted from the system at that retail store. And then on the back, they all have unique UPC codes for that residence address. So we know where those people are getting the bags. We also know that they definitely did get them. So, you know, somebody's not going to be getting 1,000 bags instead of 104 bags. The product that we provide is a better product than is currently in use. You have a flat-top bag. We provide a drawstring bag, which over 70, I think it's 75% of people select that product when they go into a store and buy bags. So we're providing a better bag. And we also give the city the opportunity to save money. And we'll see that in the slide coming up. And the other thing is, because of what we do in our core business, we have other ideas that we would like to share with you as you move forward in the future, in thinking about managing your solid waste budget and things like that that we can help I think this is pretty self-explanatory. I kind of gave that to you quickly, so I'm going to fly right by this. But basically, we manufacture the bags. They're American-made. They're recycled content, so it's also a green component. We are using less plastic, putting back plastic back into the universe. We're taking plastic back. We regrind it, and then we make it into trash bags. So we're not putting more plastic into the universe. We're trying to cut down the amount of plastic in the universe. And then also, we make them readily available in stores for folks. So depending upon what you wanted your distribution to be, I know that this year was a little bit different, because you went with a nine-month program, I believe, is what you did. So with this, either it could be done in two steps, which is our norm around the country when we do these type of programs, these voucher programs. We usually do it twice a year. There is the rare occasion where somebody wants to have it three times a year. Columbia, Missouri is a three-time-a-year program. They're also a large university town like you are. It's a completely turnkey solution. You never have to store them. You never have to touch them. You never have to take possession of them.
Mr. Wise, what is Columbia's rotation? You said they do three times a year. What are the months?
They do it in January. They do it in May. And then again, I think they do it in early September. It goes along kind of the school year, kind of changes, you know. It makes sense in that. And we set this whole thing up with all of the retailers as well. So there's really nothing that you have to do there. Let me move along. If, you're currently not selling these bags in any way, shape, or form, right?
Yeah.
So if you decide to sell the bags, you also have that opportunity. You're putting the bags out there. It's a better bag, and the folks are able to buy those bags and actually bring some money back to the municipality.
So as far as location to pick up, is it a retail store, or is it down at our, I mean, is there going to be at Kroger? And they're going to be on the shelf?
Kroger, Walmart, that kind of thing.
Are y'all already in contract with Walmart for this? I mean, so this is something...
Well, not in this, not in this one.
That's how, I mean, that's, so that the citizens will actually go to Walmart, and they'll just take that voucher up there. When they check out, it's going to be separate from their purchase.
Right. Correct.
Walmart prepared to take on 20,000 bags? I mean, don't think there's going to be a rush for people that...
Oh, yeah.
They do this.
Yeah. They do it, they do it in Arkadelphia, Arkansas. They do it in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. They do it up in a number of places in New England. So, yeah, they're used to it. Very quickly, again, this is, these numbers are a little bit different, because I got updated numbers from the department, so...
In the packet, the numbers are correct.
In the packet, the numbers are correct. So if you look at that very quickly, just to give you an idea, you have a range of savings, anywhere from, you know, generally, our redemption rate is anywhere from 51, I'm sorry, 59 to 64%. So I modeled in your packet 65%, and then a cap that we would put on this for you of 74, 75%. So on the low end, at 59% redemption, you could save up to $50,000 a year over your current cost. At 65%, you're going to save approximately $35,000. And we would cap this at about 75% redemption rate, so there would be about $190,000. Anything above and beyond that is all on us. We, you know, that's our risk. We take that risk. So if the citizens of Starkville said, "Every single one of us do use the bags," we've never, ever seen that happen. But if it happened, that would all be on us to be able to carry that out. And...
But otherwise, we would only pay for the bags we used.
That's the great thing about the program, is, let's say, of course, this would never happen either. Let's say there was 30% redemption. You would pay for 30% of the bags that, you know, that were, went in the system. We've never seen that. The lowest we've ever seen is 59%.
Is it like just-in-time inventory, where you're paying as you use, we'll pay after the purchase? Or we go and make, we'll give y'all a balance of $50,000 to buy the bags next year?
We would have a startup program where we would say, you know, we would work with your department folks and your staff folks and say, "Here's what we know."
Take our first year, that we pay last year.
Probably about 50 to 60% of, you know, what your first year should be, and go from there. And this is, this is just in there to let you know, we do need a 90-day window to put this into play. So let's say I was making this presentation two months from now, and you were out of bags the next month. We simply couldn't do that. It does take a full 90 days. You've got to get the retailers in place. You've got to have a public information program. Obviously, you're not just going to spring this on your residents. There's a lot of public information that goes on, so people are ready for this. So let me just leave you with these takeaways. One, everybody still is entitled to the same number of bags they've ever been entitled to. There's nobody that won't get bags that doesn't want bags. Two, it's a better product. We're going to give you a drawstring bag. You'll get the right-mill bag. And it's the highest quality. It's American-made. It's not, it's not from overseas, which generally, that's what you get in this business quite a bit, is you get overseas plastic. It's a complete turnkey program. You don't have to be concerned with anything. And just to complete this in perfect timing, you are guaranteed to save money. If you look at slide number, slide number 12 in your deck, the most that you'll ever spend is $5,000 less than your current cost. So you're guaranteed to save money on this program. And I appreciate your time. And I'm here for questions.
I have a lot of questions.
I'm here for questions, and I'll be hanging out.
Questions, comments for the members of the board?
Mayor?
Alderman Carter.
All right, so I've been writing questions down since... I guess the bags that we're getting now, are they 56-gallon? I mean, is it the same-sized bag that Alderman Maynard's been talking to this gentleman? Is it the same-sized bag? I mean...
I don't believe you're getting 56-gallon. I believe you're getting 33-gallon.
Is that the 33 right there?
I believe, this is a recycle bag from Arkadelphia. But I do have some of the trash bags back there.
Here's the deal. I've got constituents that if you change this up on them, size, the mill, anything like that, I'm going to have problems with it. I'm just being honest. So whatever we're getting of the city, if we can stick with it, I mean, I don't, you know, of course, there's going to be cost savings if you, if you start cutting down to take 20 gallons off a can, liner size.
I'm sorry, I didn't cover that. This is, this is equal capacity. Has to be equal capacity.
Okay.
Otherwise, you know, yeah, we could come in and give you a 12-gallon bag, and so we're going to save a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's equal capacity. And we always make the dimension of width the same, because a lot of people have cans they've used forever. So it's very important that the width is always the same.
So whatever it is, okay. What if somebody claimed they never got their voucher? I didn't get it in the mail.
We handle that. We take care of that.
So they come to City Hall, and then somebody from our sanitation department calls y'all, and y'all re-mail them to them?
Well, there's a couple ways that it works. One, you provide us with a list of who's eligible. So in that initial call, it always makes sense that they talk to the city first, so that the city can say, "Mr. Latimer is definitely a qualified water customer." Is it by the water bill or sanitation bill?
Our electricity.
Electricity?
Water, electricity, y'all go out and get it.
So he has paid his water and electricity bill. He is eligible, and we send out a new voucher.
And your cost here, does that have you mailing these vouchers out, or are they going through our electric?
We handle the whole thing.
Would it be cheaper, more cost savings if they went through our electric bill that goes out? I mean, sometimes we do like animal notifications, like, I mean, do y'all ever do that with the program, with the city, that you just bring them here and we can mail them out?
We certainly could do that, yeah.
Um, why would Walmart comply? I mean, what would be their, why would they want to do this? This is taking up warehouse space and...
There's two things. One, it's a community service, and Walmart's always looking for community programs. Because first and foremost, everybody needs to understand this. This is not a product for sale in Kroger, or Walmart, or anything like that. That's, you know, that's not the point of this. The point of this is a community service program that's to the benefit of the community, and that's why they participate. And then the second reason is a selfish reason. It's foot traffic.
Get people in the store.
Yeah.
Um, the last thing would be, I've got one more, the software and the cost, the difference. Does Walmart, does this run through their scanners, or is this additional software they put at every register, or...
Nope. This, we petition Walmart corporate, and Walmart corporate does the work in there that says this item, this barcode is now an item in their thing, and it shows up at this rate. And then the barcode side of this, the store side of this, takes that off. It in effect erases that from the system.
Okay, we've got a lot of college kids here, and the kid goes in there and tries to reuse the same voucher, just kicks them out when they're going to check out or something? It's going to limit, like you said, it keeps them from buying and buying, redeeming and redeeming?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Mr. Carver, there is probably 20 to 25 frequently asked questions in the back of that deck, that, some other areas that didn't come to the top of your mind, that probably will, so...
Alderman Maynard.
Mr. Wise, I want to make sure that I understand this. So you're telling us that Walmart would be the only retailer here that would keep...
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, we would talk to all the retailers.
So you would speak, good, okay. Now, you said that you had your try, the bags with you. May we see a sample of those bags?
Sure. So this is a recycle bag. The reason I leave them in the wrapper, so you can see how they're presented, this is how it would be in the store. So... And anybody, feel free to lift the bag up. Would you like...
So this is the recycle bag?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you can see, by the way, that there's always an insert that has all kinds of different instructions. Some of the instructions, for instance, for the recyclers, letting them know what they can put inside the bag. You also have the opportunity with the printing on the bag of saying what it is they should be putting inside the bag. So this is as, just an example, and clearly, these aren't specified for our capacity and those types of issues that... These are not your exact bags, correct? No. These are our... I bet the trash bag is pretty darn close, though, to what you're expecting. If anybody would like to...
Thank you. I yield my seat.
Alderman Maynard.
Mr. Wise, we could do regular bags and recycle bags. So would they get one voucher or two separate vouchers?
They actually get, depending upon the number of bags. So you hand out 52 each time, correct? I think it's 104. So you would probably have a, you'd have a, probably a 26, a 26, and then I don't know how many recycle bags we distribute. Anybody know?
Right now, it's one in every other week. We're considering potential of going to weekly recycle.
So if you had, if you had weekly...
That'd be 52 a year, 26 terms.
If you had weekly recycling, then this would be, we'd have 26, 26, and 26 on a triennial.
That's right.
So you can pass this around, as well.
I'm curious about Columbia. Because as a college town, our, our population in that June, July, August timeframe is cut by 42%. So, and I'm sure that's why they went on a three-time-per-year program.
Trying to match up.
Because we would see, depending on the cost per, I guess we'd have to look at the cost per roll from your perspective and compare, so we can get an apples-to-apples comparison. But if you're, you're not picking up 40% of the bags, because that population is not here for summer, there's potential for additional savings there, I would think.
Yeah, I think it's all about, if you, if you had 100 residents or businesses you were working with, we're saying overall, approximately, and this bears out with a major university town like Columbia, approximately 59 to 64% are going to have redemption. And that's including changes of students and things like that. So, and each town is a little bit different, you know, with the baseline being 59 for the lowest. I think that Broken Arrow, which is not a college town, but it's about 112,000 residents, they have a redemption rate of about 64%. So they're on the upper end.
Further discussion? Any further questions or comments from the members? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Saying none. Thank you, Mr. Wise.
Thank you for the time, and I'll be here for any additional questions. Thank you.
That concludes...
Mr. Wise, can I, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I recognize.
You may.
Thank you again for coming. We're in the process of trying to put together an entire sanitation package, and thinking about how we want to move forward citywide. So your presentation was timely, and I certainly do appreciate you coming.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
All right, a motion to go into closed session to determine whether there is a need for executive session as you know. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to go into closed session to determine whether there is a need for an executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Carter. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Allow ask for the public to vacate the premises, so the board can begin closed session deliberation. Yeah, without objection, take a brief recess. Any objections?